Thank you. Councilman Ferguson, would you do the invocation, please?
Good evening, everyone. Father God, we just thank you and we gave you the glory, we give you the honor and the praise. We just thank you for your goodness and for your mercies that are new every morning. Father God, we just thank you for your protection and for your guidance. And we invite you, your presence into this meeting. And we ask for peace and wisdom as we do the business of the city. Father God, we just thank you for how you continually bless us and keep us and our families. And Father God, I ask that you will strengthen and extend peace to councilwoman Yawn's family during her time of bereavement. And Father God, even do the same for any of us on this call that may be going through some things at this time. Father God, we just grateful to you, grateful for your love in Jesus' name, amen.
Well, thank you. Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Okay, Councilwoman Jones.
Present.
Councilman Herring.
Here.
Councilman Hairston.
Present.
Councilwoman Farree. Councilwoman, I mean, Vice President Ferguson.
Yeah.
President Curtis.
Here.
We have five in it.
Thank you. Another motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Given the the process by which the Mr. Mincy has to go through, be a part of the Youth Advisory Committee, since that process has not been completed, then I would like to postpone his resolution into a stone. So we'd like to remove that from the pending legislation. So that means the only two pieces of legislation on tonight's agenda would be the good trash contract and the approval of the deputy clerk. Ms. Jones? Councilman Jones?
Considering we just received this contract from the attorney on the trash contract, I need to know if the revised contract has been sent to good for them to read it, or did they just get it today also?
I'll have to check with Ms. Barber. I mean, we could tackle that in the discussion.
No, so it's not been sent to good.
Okay. Any other discussion that relates to the agenda? All right, so a vote to approve the agenda with the removal of the appointment of Mr. Rowan Mincy. Madam Clerk? I can't hear you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Jones? You can't hear me?
I can hear you now.
I hear you. Epstein.
Yes, ma'am, sorry. Councilman Herring?
Yeah.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
President Curtis?
Yes.
Ma'am Ford is suspended.
All right, thank you. First on the agenda is a resolution, Resolution R fifty-two twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a contract for trash removal services. Do I have a motion to bring this to the floor for a vote?
So move.
Second? I'll second it. Discussion. Ms. Jones?
Yes. So maybe Mr. Councilman Hairston, I mean, Councilman Herring can assist me in this. Councilman Herring, if good does not accept our contract, the contract that we've written here, rewritten here, is that a possibility? What happens in that case?
That is a possibility. That means that we won't have a contract. And we've probably had to put it back out to bed if they don't accept their terms and agreements that we have in here.
And even if, even if they wanted to, some of the, maybe they want to accept a partial, some of the things, and then maybe there's just one or two things they have an issue with, they send back to their attorney. So we'll still be waiting until those issues are rectified, correct?
Right, and we can either accept them or agree with them or not.
And I'd like to know, like I said, with Ms. Barber, I mean, when the council clerk sent this out today, has any of the other council had an opportunity to really read this and to see what the changes were? Or we just gonna vote on something in the blind? I mean, this is
Me as a councilperson, I mean, this is my first time seeing it with these changes. As a matter of fact, the only reason I wanted it to come to the floor is because I did have some discussion that I would like to have on it that I've seen may need to be looked at.
So at this juncture, should we be thinking about getting an extension from good for another month until we can get this straightened out? Or should, because I just don't want to pass this on a fly, just, you know, because we, we do need trash pickup. Citizens are probably, one thing they appreciate is that the trash pickup that we, service that we have. And I don't wanted to see it go to the wayside because it was taking so long to follow the steps and to ensure that this contract would be sufficient for the city of Glen Arden. But I don't want to see it rushed because we need trash pickup. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Councilwoman Ferguson, and then I'll come to you, Councilman Herring.
So.
This is to Councilman Herring, is it customary or that a contract is drawn up and we vote on it without the vendor saying?
No, we normally, we normally would make whatever legal changes we made or whatever requirements we have, and we send it to them, and they run about their attorneys. You get back and forth for about thirty days. This is, this is not customary. I'm surprised, I thought, I mean, so they haven't seen this at all? I mean, I'm just seeing this, so I'm assuming they haven't seen it at all, so, yeah, this isn't customary.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with this. I did just get it myself. And I'm kind of with Councilwoman Jones, maybe we can do another, see if they do another extension because in my personal life, I don't just have, have absolutely signed a contract or vote on anything last minute.
I agree with Councilwoman Jones as well.
Let me say, if we do it, I think we need to do it for three months, another three months at minimum, because we don't know what the back and forth is going to take. You need to give us some time to also get everything ironed out and everybody get it before we have to come back to the floor again and ensure that they have it.
Miss, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Jones, are you finished? I mean, not Councilwoman Jones, Councilwoman Ferguson.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Councilman Harry?
Yeah, I mean, I did have some comments on it, but if we're gonna extend it in that place, I can actually, I can send them to y'all separately. You don't have to discuss them tonight. Unless you want to.
Ms. Barber, I know we've had a sad conversation about them possibly extending it because I know it was getting short on time. Did you hear back from them about an extension?
So the extension that we signed with them does have provisions for another extension in there. And I did talk with them about that, but I had also, you know, had the contract drawn up. It's substantially the same as the two thousand and eighteen contract.
Is there a reason why they have not seen it yet?
I just didn't, was not aware that I needed to send it to them.
Okay. So they sent us the contract. I'm sorry, could you just elaborate on the process for a second? Did they send us the contract and we sent it to our legal for them to review? And now we're voting on sending it back, or did we just come up with a contract ourselves, send it to our legal team, and now trying to vote on it and send it to them?
So the contract, like I said, is substantially the same as the two thousand and eighteen contract that had been in place with good since then, that was sent back to our attorney who reviewed it for legal sufficiency and sent it back to me, then I sent it to the clerk.
And back when we had the, when they were on, I made a, you know, when they were on one of our meeting calls and they didn't necessarily do a presentation, but we're here to ask, answer any questions. So they never sent over a new contract?
They sent over the second piece of information that you all received, which is a one pager.
And that was for the financial terms, correct?
No, that was for the, well, for the terms of the contract.
Okay, and how long is the extension in the, in the extension? How long can we extend it for?
I believe it's for another three months.
Okay, and that activates with what, just us asking for three months, or does it automatically roll over?
No, we have to ask for that.
Okay. So I think the proper protocol would be to, I guess, another motion to table this until we've had a chance to really go through this contract and they've had a chance to go through the contract as well. That'll put us at August, September, October, I think that should be good. I have a motion to table the
So move.
Second.
And third.
Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Jones?
Okay, so I understand now we're going to table this. And what should happen when you do business with people and you have contracts? The contract should, of course, went to our attorney for legal sufficiency. He has highlighted some things in this new contract that are changes that he made. The only thing that I see that's the same is the nineteen seventy-five single-family units that has not changed. So other than that, the other changes that he made, we need to go over. So now this is gonna go, this should go, number one is what's gonna happen is it's gonna go to, we're gonna go to good and get a request for another three months' extension. Then after, and even in that process, we should be sending them the contract that has been drawn up by the city of Glen Arden, saying, this is what we want. While they're looking it over, we're gonna be looking it over, and we're gonna wait for them to respond. And we should give them, or not give them, I guess, I'm sure they know how to do business. They'll send us back what it is that we need to do. What, where their attorney says yea or nay pertaining to this contract? Because there are some changes in this contract that the attorney did, even though it's being told to us that it's the same contract from two thousand and eighteen. Is that the process that I'm hearing?
Mr. President?
I'm sorry, Mr. Harry?
Yeah, I think that what we first should do is that we need to come together as a council because if none of us have seen it and went through it, we need to, we may have changes in here that we would like to have incorporated before it goes to good. So I think we need to actually have another work session on this because like I said, it's some changes that I see in here that I think need to be looked at. And I don't know if any other council member has gone through it, and they may have some changes. And then, again, we gotta send that back to the attorney and get him to incorporate them if we agree on it. Then that's, that'd be the final version that will go to good.
Okay, so, so Councilwoman Jones, your vote to table this is?
If that's what I'm hearing, we're going to do. We're dragging our feet on this. Yes, table it.
Thank you.
Ma'am Harry?
Yes. Yes.
Vice President Ferguson?
This one for clarity, so we will be asking for a three-month extension, am I right?
Correct.
Yes.
President Curtis?
Yes.
We have five.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you. All right. Resolution R fifty-four twenty-two, a resolution to approve Robin V. Bailey Wells as the deputy clerk to the, to the council. A motion to bring this to the floor for a vote?
So move. Second.
All right, let's just go with Councilman Ferguson as first, Mr. Herr in a second. Any discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, can you bring it up for the reading of it, please?
Resolution. Hold on, sorry. Resolution R fifty-four two thousand and twenty-two. Introduced by Derek D. Curtis, the second council president, co-sponsored by Angela D. Ferguson, Vice President, public hearing Tuesday, July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, session, special regular session. Date of introduction, Monday, July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. A resolution authorizing the appointment of Robin B. Bailey Wells as the deputy council clerk of the city of, I'm sorry, council clerk of this seat. I'm sorry.
Sorry, council clerk, I have it. Whereas pursuant to section nine oh two of city trial, the council president has determined that it is appropriate to provide personnel to perform duties of the deputy clerk to the council on behalf of legislative office. And whereas indicated in section nine oh two, the deputy clerk to the council shall be appointed by the president of the council with approval of the majority of the council who shall serve at the pleasure of the council. And whereas the council has determined that the appointment of Robin V. Bailey Walls as the permanent deputy clerk to the council should be approved. Now therefore be resolved by the city council Glen Arden sitting in special regular session this twenty-fifth day of July two thousand and twenty-two as follows. The city council be and is hereby authorized to provide personnel to perform duties of the deputy clerk to the council for the legislative office. From two, that Robin V. Bailey Walls be, and she is hereby appointed as the deputy clerk to the council and is authorized to undertake all those powers and duties as set out in section nine oh two of the charter. And three, that this resolution will take effect immediately upon passage by the council. Madam Clerk, could you do the roll call for this, please?
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
President Curtis?
Yes.
Okay, we have five this day.
Thank you. And I apologize, council clerk, I should have taken that from the jump. All right, with that, there were some final discussions on the budget, and that is next up on the agenda. Mr. Stewart, the treasurer Stewart, sent out the budget last week. Today, he sent out the bridge, because I know some council members have raised the question of seeing where we started from versus to where we are now. So the floor is open to discussion on any comments, changes, edits needed in the, at this point, this latest draft of the budget, the floor is open to the council.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Harry?
Yeah, one thing I think we need to do is to spell out the events and all the special events budget items for the departments. I mean, every department is spelling out what their special events money is being spent on. I think we need to, that should be for all departments, so that we know what's being spent on what. We've always spelled out what was going to be spent on, what the special events money was going to be spent on. I think we should continue to do that with all the departments.
Thank you, Mr. Harry. Mr. Treasurer Stewart, do we have a list of those items? Is Mr. Stewart online?
Yes, thank you, President Curtis. For the police department, yes, we do have a list of the, the events that they are having. For the admin, where we have some of the events that the mayor was planning to do. They, they're there, they're listed, but they don't give more, like, they're not detailed as, you know, with the police, they're having their national night out. They actually tell you what they're gonna be spending on, you know, T-shirts, on, you know, it's itemized. So I am, I have not gotten a real detailed, itemized list of events, which I would agree with Mr., with Councilman Herring. It would have given me a better chance to track those events as they go along. So I think where that is concerned, we just needed a more detailed list of the expenses that will be incurred in each of the different events that were planned. But they do have totals for each event.
I'm sorry, the, the administration does have total for each event?
Yes.
And so currently it's at seventeen thousand five hundred, and do you have a list of those events with the total?
Not currently, but I know between the mayor, myself, and Ms. Barber, we could prepare and go through what we have and have a list. And as I can see, the mayor is, has her hand up, maybe she could give us more detail.
Okay, just a second, Mr. Herr, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, because I mean, even like in a council, we say you were spending this much on the Glennon Davis, spending this much on, you know, health, I mean, healthy, I mean, Hill City and whatever other event we're having, we have a list and a dollar amount of how much we're spending on each event. And that's what I'm looking for, that's basically, yes.
Thank you. Mayor Cross?
Yes, thank you so much, and that's exactly what you have, Council President, a list of each event and how much that dollar amount is expected for each event. So I'm not quite sure where Treasurer Stewart is and what he's talking about, but I've turned that into the city council as well as to the city manager. Every event has listed by name, by month, by date, and the dollar amount expected per event that has been turned in.
Mr. Stewart, do you not have that?
Yes, and that's what I'm saying, we have them in total, but as per each event and the detail of the expenditures that will be, that would be incurred. I don't have a list that, you know, detail what are the different elements that are going to be affecting those events. We just have totals. And with, with totals, then you could spend it anyway. I want to have detail as to, you know, each, what is the element that is going to be within, like, as I said, with the, the police events, they gave me a breakdown of the expenses that they will be incurring for a specific event, and that's what I'm looking for. Because with that, I can better able to track what's going on in their respective events. That's it. But totals will, you know, you could spend it anyway, and I am not totally with that.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Councilwoman Jones?
Yeah, because, okay, so maybe I'm not, I'm looking at the budget that was in my mailbox. And under public safety, it's just special events. I'm seeing parades, community outreach, so that's been re-written to include the each event that they're having with the totals in another, in the, I guess, in the final budget? Is that what you're saying, Mr. Stewart?
Okay, so we did not detail those expenses within the budget, but we have schedules that support those numbers. So if, for example, the council need a list and itemize expenditures per event, then we could actually provide that to you. But the, I, but the, the totals are there, but we have schedules to support them. And that's what I would love to have on the inside, you know, on the backside of it, we should have detailed expenditures.
Okay, so it's not like in the legislative office where it's under special events, they have Christmas party, Hill City shred day two, an expanderment fair, a back-to-school backpack giveaway, and then the community outreach and Glen Arden Day. So there, it's, it's not in the budget like that for the public safety or for the administration, but you have a schedule is what you're saying?
But yes, we have schedule, and it would be good too if the council could give me for those events, we have totals, give me a breakdown of the expenses that would be expected to incur. That way I could better control and manage the funds as they are being spent.
Okay, so for the administration, you're looking for a breakdown of the seventeen, what is it, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for their events and special events that we, the council has approved?
Yes, so for that seventeen thousand for each of the event within their respective time that they're going to happen, I would love to know what are we going to actually do? And what are the incur, what will we incur for each of those? And it should agree to the seventeen thousand.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so I have a couple of other questions, but I'll let somebody else, if they have questions, go.
Well, since we're, it's related to special events, I think the mayor's comments relate to special events, then I'll go back to the mayor for a comment.
Thank you, Council President. And respectfully, I would just like for the citizens to understand that Treasurer Stewart, I don't know where your bias is, but no one turned in what you're asking for, no one. I've seen that budget, and the council didn't do it, public safety didn't do it. So please, let's not stretch the truth. What you're asking for is a complete breakdown of each event. Every department needs to do it that way. You need to exercise some fair discanter. The administration did turn in every event by month that it will happen and the total expected for that event. Those are event estimates. Now, what you want every department to do then is to say, we're gonna have so much for food, and who are we gonna have it from? I mean, that's something that really you're asking for some projections that are well out in the future. We may find better vendors in the future. So I think you're asking for numbers that's gonna be skewed relative to the budget. I would just ask the council to consider that the events are out there, we have listed them. The budget supports, it's not what we asked for, you've already cut that tragically. But we will make do with what we have in the administrat- Uh but we will make do with what we have in the administration. So I just want to make sure that going forward, the treasurer puts an accurate picture out there. Cause no one turned in a detailed explicative on each event they will have, no one, thank you.
So I'm.
One second, uh Treasurer Stewart, uh Councilwoman Ferguson.
I'm looking at the budget where an administration, page nine or twenty-three, and in the events. While they do have seventeen-five, and they have community-wide events and citizen feedback forms. Under special events, that's all that's written in there. I'm looking at page twelve or twen- uh twenty-three legislation in uh special events. We have Christmas party, seven thousand dollars, Hill City event, seven thousand dollars, Shred Day, two thousand dollars, Spun Day, five thousand dollars. Back-to-school giveaway, one thousand dollars, community outreach and Glenon Day, thirty thousand dollars, we did list. Our events and we did list the dollar amount.
Just one second.
Respectfully recall, you took the.
Point of order, Mayor Cross, one second, I'll come to you in due time, just one second, please, all right. So Ms. Ferguson, you were highlighting the special events listed this way, correct?
Yes. Now I wanna know, um, what else is the, does Treasurer want besides that? Since he, he said he didn't have it for us, what does he need? Mr. Stewart?
Okay, so for example, the public safety department, the police department. For their events, they have actually um given me. The e- the breakdown of each of the events and the expenses that would be incurred. Um for, that would not go into the budget. Right now, as it stands, you have special events. And it says parade, communicate, uh community outreach, et cetera. But they have actually given me schedules for each of the events that they're having. And the expenditures that they will be incurring. I am looking at that as a back-end um support document. Like the supplemental information that I have. For the council, it is broken down according to each of the events that you're having. But how those expenditures will be incurred is not presented. Either by council or by admin, but it's there, I have those scheduled for public safety.
Okay, the normal process, I mean, if that's what you want, but um, is once we have the event. Then you get a, a report of, of what was spent, on what?
Okay, so the public safety department, they have been preparing. Or they have been having events, I think the last one they had, especially for. The national night, I think they had national night or last year, but the year twenty eighteen, they actually had a breakdown of the expenses. That they incurred, and with that. Um Sergeant Robbins, uh Sergeant uh Richardson was able to prepare, along with me. A schedule to show how they were expecting to make those expenditures for this year. Which is twenty twenty-three. So it's, as I said, it's a budget, it's an estimate, it is not. What you are going to actually spend on these event. They are budget, is what we expect to spend, we may spend less, we may spend a little more. But at least we have those expenses to review and to monitor and to control. How those events are being spent, or being expended.
Uh uh um, for example, Hill City events, um, that can be anything but health. Um I could have a chef doing healthy food, I could spend, uh or I can. Decide I'm gonna do something else, have mental health, or so. I mean, I don't know, right now, for instance, what particular thing I'm gonna do. All I know is that is in the budget, and I, and I have that to do, so you want me to make up something? Because you can get a budget, um, once the, I mean, like this seven thousand dollars, it may not even spend seven thousand dollars. But you can get a budget, um I'm definitely request budgets after every event. To, to uh itemize every dollar that was spent, that's, that's what was normally the procedure anyway. But it was after the event, but um. But you would know pri- prior to the event, what money's a dollar amount was allocated for each event. So again, like for instance, um, the Christmas party, um, you would want to know. Like hypothetically, we had a caterer, just how much we anticipate spending uh on a caterer?
Exactly.
Whether we would know, know or not, even though, um you know, food is going up and up, we don't really know how much it would cost, but give an estimate.
That's it, that's exactly, and um, uh Councilman Herring, that is something that you're considering too, yes?
Actually, not to that detail, actually, no, because we always have so, I mean, we deal with so many different vendors. We never know what the cost is gonna be for caterers, or if we're gonna get a good deal, so us giving you numbers are not gonna really help you out at all. Because we don't know where we're gonna fall when it comes down to the um services that we try to secure for these events. Um like um, Councilwoman um Ferguson said, you know, I think we had, we used one chef that we used, and then I think we had another chef. Then we decided not to do the healthy eating, we decided to do, what was it, uh meditate, meditation? And all of that other stuff, so we don't know what we're gonna do until we get to that point where we're ready to plan. And I mean, I mean, that's the same, I, I mean, I, and I agree um with the mayor, I mean, it is, that's to that level of detail, it's kinda hard to really plan it out. Um to, you know, cause we never know, like right now, even with Glennon Day, you know, we're trying to get. Um contributions and donations, but it's, it's not working, because you know, a lot of people are not giving them out, so you know, we may have, I might have to. Throw another five in this budget, you know, so like I said, if I given you numbers, then those numbers would not have jailed. Um with what you had, I think it'd be a. Uh uh I mean, it's good to have, but I don't think it would do you too much good, because then you're gonna be trying to monitor something that really, we don't know what, what it's gonna cost. See, and that's the thing with that.
So if you could just give a breakdown that's similar to what we have here under the council. Uh believe what this Councilman Herring is asking for, for that seventeen-five in administration budget or any other budget that doesn't have this breakdown. If that breakdown could be added to the budget.
Okay, so we'll, you know, extend that um role and include um a breakdown of such.
Thank you. I'm sorry, so, I'm, I haven't forgotten about you, Ms. Jones, uh this Councilwoman, Councilwoman Ferguson, is just to relate it to special events?
Yeah, so basically, um, what would help you then, I mean, what we do is after the event or during, you know, we keep it down. And we give you a budget, a report of what actually was spent and what, after, not before.
And yes, that would help as well, and that would help me for the next year.
Right.
When those um events come around again.
Okay.
Yes.
Mayor Cross, is your comment related to the special event?
Yes, it is, and I turned in an actual Excel uh by month and dollar figure for every event by name. To the treasurer, so I would like for the treasurer to please, as once requested before, include that. When he passes this budget forward, so that the citizens have a clear understanding of every event and a dollar figure. As presented in the original presentation, I don't know why it keeps getting left off. But I thank you, Councilman Herring, for, and Councilwoman Ferguson, for that clarity. Uh because it really is difficult to make that projection, and it would just put screwed numbers in our budget. Which isn't healthy for the city, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. Councilwoman Jones?
Hey, if we're finished with special events?
Yeah.
Okay, so what was the um conclusion on the goal room, since we didn't get uh, couldn't get any information from um. The administration, and um of course, our goal room coordinator has left the city. Um what, what was the, what, what, I mean, how did the treasurer come up with the uh figures that he has for the goal room?
The numbers that we came up with was worked through with the um. The coordinator and with the city manager. Um. The coordinator spent more time on this because of her um experience in. Doing some of her events, um when it comes to the, the revenue. It was based on a, a schedule of events that she projected to have.
So we're gonna go with what, what um was presented.
What I'm, what I'm looking at here is that we, we may have to work with our next coordinator. To see how best we could follow, or even better, um the projected. Um expenditures and revenues that the previous coordinator had. So we'll just have to monitor this with them.
And so I also noticed, um. I also noticed in the administration where the um. City manager's salary was taken up, is that through the, the um cola increase, or was that?
Yes, so the city manager, if you remember, in the earlier. Budget, the first one that was presented, we actually did an adjustment to bring it back to what it would be. As relate to the earlier decision for the three percent cola. Now, given that we have moved the cola up to five point nine, that increase now presents. Um what her um, the city manager's salary will be.
And, okay, so, and I would suggest to the council, I don't know how we would do that, how, how this is gonna get done, but. Since the uh city manager that we have has only been on with us a little over six months, that her salary stays at where it is until we do a. Our evaluation, or has the evaluation already been done?
No, the valuation has not been done, but um the agreement that the council decided on, set all employees get the cola. And so that's where we landed, when we left.
Okay, so, and so you're saying all the employees will get the cola, but I thought that there was also um. That's just my take on that, so.
But if I could inter- I just interrupt to, to, for the summary, so it was um the cola and the, the bonus. So while she's eligible for the cola, the bonus is something separate, new employees aren't eligible for that piece.
Okay, so um with the public works department, I thought we discussed that they were um. The lowest in the budget as far as um. Raises, they're gonna get the cola, but are we gonna take their salary up just a little bit to bring it to at least the minimum of what we saw? With the uh report that was given to us by uh Ms. Schultz. And it, with the cola, or you, or, or it, it. I can't say it, but so, we, yeah, where are we with that? Are we going to uh take, because we, we identified the public works in another uh department that had uh under. The poverty level for payment or being paid uh as a council, are we gonna address that? Or we just gonna give the uh cola, the five dot nine cola, and just, I mean, cause even if we just did the public works. And that other person that we identified, um. And then next year, we do another department, I mean, are we able to do that, or are we just gonna give everybody the five dot nine cola, and? I mean, what's the council, I, I wanna know what the council's pleasure is on that.
Well, it, it's certainly open if the council chooses to um take another look at it, but. Just reminded where we left off last time is, one, understanding that uh we, we got this at a pretty poor time. And so we didn't have enough time to uh receive a comprehensive uh salary study that was strategic. Um and had an implementation plan um that, you know, it should have accompanied this, uh the proposal. Um and so what the council decided on was that since it will be too much work to try to. You know, factor all these things, different things in, we pushed that back to the administration. To have a more strategic approach uh of how um our sal- uh where our salaries are. Uh and implementing a, a new salary um uh scale for staff. Uh and so until that's done, what council has decided is that we would grant the five point nine percent cola increase to all employees. And that we would have a bonus pool uh that we would um, that will be released at the discretion of the count. Of approval of the, the council based on evaluations. Uh and that part of money is not eligible, uh is not for new employees, it's for, uh I believe. Employees that have been here for a certain amount of time, but even that has to be um, a plan, has to be put in place. Uh and approved by the council before those funds are released, but for the, the council chooses to revisit the. Um public works salary, and I will also uh put in there um the. Mrs. Jones salary and the um police department, then council can certainly, you know, make another decision on that. But where we left off was just the five point nine and bonus. Does that answer your question?
Um, no, but um I'm not getting any help here.
It, it, is there anybody on the floor that wants to? Okay, thanks.
Uh let me say, I mean, I, I mean, I, I assume what the council president just said is what we had come to. Um I thought we were gonna look at it later on, maybe in a year, because we really did not have the information in the timely fashion to really. Really go over it and look at everybody's position, their years here, um and all of that, cause all that has to be looked at too. Um and try to decide where we can equitably um bring our salaries up, I agree, they do need, those salaries do need to go up. And I think instead of rushing into it, I think we need to sit down and analyze it and look to see exactly what, you know, have some method to it. Um and some criteria to what we're gonna do. Um the schedule, the, 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 the salary uh schedule that we got was, is very helpful, I think we can move from there. Um and decide what we wanna do, like I said, we're gonna look at it in a couple of months, but right now, you know, to do that, I think we would drag this budget out even longer.
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. uh Councilman Herring, uh but I just heard in that conversation that we were gonna look at public works. And the police clerk's uh salary to make sure that they were above the poverty level, so I mean, but if that's.
I mean, that's what I'm talking, those, those are what I'm talking about, you know, I mean, we, I, I think. You know, I mean, we've I I think some other departments have already been favored more than others over the years, and I think we do need to look at those two departments to see, to bring them up. And that was my suggestion last time um that we look at that. So, I mean, I just right now with the time and and all the information we just got from the um the salary review that we paid for, I think we need to sit down and 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 look it over in a comprehensive way and decide what we're going to do.
All right, sir. Thank you. Thank you both.
I mean, also, I also I think if we do it this year, I mean, it should be retro, no matter what we do. I think it should be retro back to July first, no matter what.
I'm in full uh agreement with you, Councilwoman Jones. So I you have my support there. I just uh basically all that Mr. Harry just Councilman Harry just said um. So okay, all right. Any other questions? Michelle, Councilman Jones. Council members, any other discussion on the budget?
Now, um, let me just say, because we're working on Glenn Arden Day right now, we are running into a little bit of issue with we are not getting any contributions, any donations. I'm not sure. It's because they're tapped out um over the years. Um, I think we can do it with the thirty, but I just wanted to be cushioned to have thirty five in there just to be sure. Um, normally by now, we will hear from most of our vendors, you know, we haven't heard from Wegmans, we haven't heard from um none of the big stores, Wegmans, BJ's, they used to give water um and food, we could do get some people out, reach out to John and everything. But um, I don't know, I think with COVID and giving away so much stuff, they're kind of rolling back their contributions now. So that's the only thing I uh would like to see if we can get increases, a minimal increase in the budget for that. And I we probably won't use it because we we're being very frugal with what we're doing. So um that's the only thing I see.
I'm sorry, Councilman Ferguson.
Yeah, I just wanted to um declare it on.
I'm sorry, is is this relates to uh Councilman Harry's point before you go to another point?
Oh, no.
I don't want to ignore his point.
Oh, okay. I mean, outside of um I'd be willing to give some of my Hill City money.
I don't think we should have to do that. I think it's enough money. We're talking about when you got five thousand dollars is not a lot to.
Okay, okay.
You know.
So, Mr. Aaron, I I mean, I don't necessarily disagree that you need five thousand dollars. I just run into a a dilemma for me that if if we're going to raise an event by five thousand dollars, certainly we could raise public works salary. I I I would be hesitant to move on this and not move on salaries for staff.
Let me say, um, I'm not saying we're not going to raise public work salaries. I'm saying we need to look at it in a comprehensive way, and I'm not saying wait a whole year either. I'm saying we need to look at it, but we still can um and if we want to, I think we have a contingency fund down there. I think I think I don't know if we added it or not. Then pop some money in that contingency fund also, so that when we do look at it, we won't have to worry about um amending the budget.
Okay.
Uh, my thing is, my thing is, I mean, looking at it, like I said, again, in a comprehensive way and right, because it's going to be way more than five thousand dollars to address public works and 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 any other employee that needs to be brought up to at least the minimum range of of their of their uh position.
Okay. And do you have uh? I'm looking for now. Mrs. Stewart, did you put that um contingency in the capital budget? Or somewhere in the budget?
Yes.
Where did you put it?
It would be in the capital section.
And what is it?
It's it's at two hundred and fifty now.
Can I ask a question? What is the two hundred and fifty designated for in the contingency?
It is reserve funds to assist with capital expenditures.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't see that. Where do you see that?
It's a second. Okay, so when you look at capital projects,
I'm sure my screen.
You have general fund surplus twenty twenty one, two hundred and fifty thousand go up to sources. Yes, the second item. That's funds coming from resort um reserves to assist with the capital um capital purchasing or capital projects.
But we needed something uh specific for what we discussed, uh which was the bonuses for staff. Um, and what I'm hearing Mr. Herron says is maybe added to that so that we could address the salary issues in the year.
But what I can tell you though is um right now as we stand, we are only holding on to a surplus of seven thousand dollars after capital expenditures.
What is our surplus, our operating surplus?
Operating surplus is two hundred and thirteen thousand. And that amount is put into the capital project.
Okay, so operations have a surplus of two hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
Um, these capital expenditures, which are one-time projects um.
Capital projects alone is one point seven four four million.
Understand.
Mm-hmm.
So can we just put um you guys can hit me over here if this number's too high. Um, a hundred and fifty total to earmark? Because there are two different things that we're doing here. Uh, one is the budget for the budget, the bonuses for staff in this year. So that's part of of the one fifty. The other part is to be able to address salaries, which we will may not use. But in absence of any type of you know, hardcore data, um, you know, this is all we have right now.
Council, Council President, um, we have, we have actually um accounted for eighty thousand to assist with bonuses. La- um, we have actually put that amount in. So there's a so what we would have had is eighty seven thousand and nineteen as um as a surplus. But because we um, there's a five point nine percent, yes, increase in salaries. But we also had included bonuses. Bonuses using the eighty thousand, which is spread across everyone except um the chief.
Yeah, no, understand that. Where where is the eighty thousand dollars?
The eighty thousand is spread across in their respective departments. So you would not see it, you would not see the eighty thousand here because I have included it in the act in the um the department's revenue, our department's salaries. So if you go to anyone, they, if you go to, yes, you see incentive here of um approximately eight thousand.
Yeah.
That's a seventy, yes, that is a portion of the eighty thousand that we have a portion to all employees.
Okay. So there hasn't been a plan established to spread this out across the department. So could you take it out of every department and just put it as a lump sum? I mean, you, if you want to, you could put it in um.
How I how I did it before or how I have it now is based on headcount.
Understand. If you just take it all out, because this was contingent upon something being presented to the council that the council was comfortable with, a robust plan to allocate those funds to the various department. And because nothing has been presented yet, it should all be taken out and put it uh uh into capital expenditures until a plan is presented. And once the plan is presented and the council approves, then those funds can be released uh and spread out however the plan designates those funds to be spread out.
Okay, will do.
So that's eighty thousand.
Yes.
Mr. Harry, I'll refer to you another fifty thousand dollars for the salary or how how does the council want to add to that? Or Mr.?
I think that should be um, that should be more than enough. I don't think we're going to use it all. But I was wondering, um, why will we put songs on the capital when we have a line um on under revenue? This says general general fund surplus and we're using
I'm sorry.
On page one of the summary, there's a general fund surplus, we can't just pluck it in there so at least we can see it?
Yeah, we can plug it. We can plug it in there. I was just, you know, that's fine.
So the idea is to move it from their respective department and put it as an income until it's time for it to be expended?
Yes.
Sounds good.
So why would we put it on the income?
No, but um that would not work because this is an expenditure that we are intended to spend. It's an amount that we are intended to spend.
So it's funded by the surplus?
Yes.
What's the surplus that you had spread throughout the budget?
Yes. So right now, as I said, it without the eighty thousand spread to their respective department based on headcount, our surplus would be eighty seven thousand.
So you should have a general fund surplus of eighty seven thousand and then an expense somewhere in here.
So I could
So so let her interrupt uh Treasury. And you can correct me if I'm wrong. So Councilman Harry, we have an operating surplus of of two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Uh, and so in order for us to make this work, we will put a hundred and thirty thousand dollars as an expense line item somewhere in the budget. Um, it can, if you want to put it on the general operations, that's fine. And so a hundred and thirty thousand will go here, which will reduce this uh to about eighty three thousand dollar of a capital of another capital of operating surplus.
Mm-hmm.
Um, then from there, you have your capital projects. Uh, with that, Mr. Stewart has laid out how he plans, how the city plans to pay for those capital projects. Does that provide more clarity for this? Mr. Harry?
Um, I mean, I I see what you're saying, but I guess I guess I'm trying to figure out why are we using a general general fund surplus to, I mean, there's you're saying, so this budget has a two hundred and thirteen, two hundred and thirteen thousand dollar surplus? This two thousand, two thousand and twenty-three budget?
Yes. Operating surplus.
So why are we, if it's operating, why are we putting that on the capital to cover capital expenditures? Well, I mean, that's a one-time expense?
No, we don't have to. I I I say capital, but you know, forgive me, we could put that on the general operation. So it'll still be on the uh operating expenses.
And so you would then do what for capital? Because capital will now be, will I now have a deficit in it of two thirteen?
Yes.
And so how would you plug that?
The capital have, okay. So technically, so we'll add a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to general operations to cover what we approved. Uh, so that'll leave about uh eighty three thousand dollars of a surplus in um in operations. And so he will, Mr. Stewart, will either have to go to see what um either go into our uh overall general fund surplus that we've had over the years to pay for capital projects that we have on the books? Or if they're eligible for ARPA, uh use ARPA funds for it? Or some other grant that is paying for a capital project?
That's what I would do with the capital because we need to use the operating, because that we need that continual revenue stream, especially if we're going to be budgeting the salaries with that. So we know that money's coming, that that money's going to be coming in every year if we, you know.
Yeah.
Probably taxes that. So I I think we should do, use whatever opera money or the overall general fund surplus for any capital purchases, since this is one time with those are one-time hits.
Yes, I agree. So, Mr. Stewart, do you have all that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so the hundred and thirty thousand, well, first you will collect the with the eighty thousand dollars you spread out, you put it into general funds, you add fifty thousand dollars to that to general funds under um uh bonus and salary adjustments. Um, again, this is at the uh approval of the council after a plan is presented to release those funds. And then you can go, as Miss Councilman Harry just said, into the general fund from prior um surpluses to pay for those one-time projects or opera money.
So, sorry, don't mean to cut you, President Curtis, but we are looking at um some of the surplus, but mostly from the ARPA for what can be supported by the ARPA.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Aaron, are you good?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns related to the budget? Councilwoman Ferguson.
Is this, we offer this?
Yeah.
Yeah, just one of my notes from a past um budget meeting, I just want to make sure I have clarity. Um, this is in relation to the newsletter that's under um let's say it mark, the newsletter that we had decided that it would be for, I guess, the everyone to put their information in. And I think it's sixty five hundred dollars in there. I thought we had um just want to bring it to nine thousand. Um, by taking the twenty five hundred dollars out of um executive um because I think the mayor said when I, when I asked her, what was that for? Uh, she said it was for um her quarterly cards, advertising her cards and things like that. But then we agreed that that could be done in the newsletter. Taking that twenty five hundred dollars out of the executive and put it in, I think it's, I think it's a capital.
Okay. Just right here, um, the sixty five hundred dollars you talked
Yeah, because that the newsletter would advertise, I guess, whatever's going on in the city in addition to any upcoming events. Um, so the twenty five hundred would have went to the sixty five, making it nine thousand.
What's um the twenty five hundred that you speak of, is it this professional professional services?
Yeah, when I asked what it was, um, mayor said that it was for advertising her quarterly cards and her her events. And that was before we got to the newsletter, then when we got to the newsletter, um we all discussed that that high risk could go in there. And I thought we said we're going to move the twenty five hundred to a go with the sixty five hundred, making the total nine thousand.
Mr. Stewart? We can't hear you if you're speaking, Mr. Stewart.
Sorry, sorry, um. So what I have here is previously we had four thousand dollars in the newsletter. On the general operations. We had transferred twenty five hundred, making it sixty five hundred, and that came from. The admin special event, but you're saying now that it should have come from. The professional fees in executive?
Um. Yeah, because my question was. When we were going over the mayor's budget. And when we got to professional services, I asked, what was the services? Cause there's nothing listed. And if you go into some of the other, um, offices, they have, they, they list what their professional services are, um, out. Like ours, for instance, is consulting services, temp, um, in, uh, employees, patentarian, to the temp, um. Marquis, sandwich board, agents, things such as that, um. But it was not, we weren't in the admin, we were in executive. I'm just, so you took it out of the admin?
Came out of the admin section of the, um, the special event. So unless I'm gonna put it back into special event and take it from professional fees in executive. Um, that adjustment was done. However, you are saying that we need more funds in the newsletter printing?
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that. I don't know how you got it out of, um, the special events, cause we was taking money, putting money into the special. Into this, that's cause their special events was like five thousand, and we made it up to seventy-five. But I'm saying that was even before we got to admin, when we. Was supposed to take the twenty five. Hundred out of. The executive, that's where, that's where the mayor said that, that her, her, uh, quarterly. Uh, advertising was for. That was, that was a separate day, but then when we finally got to where the newsletter is. And I asked, what was the newsletter? Then that was explained, and it did include. As, you know, putting in her, um, all of our events. I mean, maybe, um, I don't know, maybe someone else can remember that, but it, it definitely wasn't coming out of the admins on special events, because we was putting money. Into the special events, um, because the admins, um, was five thousand, now it's seventy-five, seventeen-five. So, so we wasn't taking anything, we were adding. I don't know, maybe somebody else might.
No, I, I concur. I do remember us adding to the admin budget, not taken from, uh, but I will, um. Mayor Cross, if you can elaborate what the special, the professional services was in the budget?
Sure. Professional services is for us to do, uh, surveys of economic development, surveys of emergency preparedness. That's what I explained for those consulting planning programs. So that twenty five hundred is to pay for someone to evaluate our city. For those areas of even strategic planning. So strategic planning, economic development, as well as, um, crisis management. Um, risk management. Those are the surveys of professional services. That's what that twenty five hundred is for.
Councilman, Councilman Ferguson?
Yeah, and that sounds good, and that, that sounds better, but you said in that budget meeting. That that was your first explanation for that. And we can go, we can go back to the video, that's what you said. So do not interrupt me, please, because I did not interrupt you. But that's not what you said, and, and, and all I'm saying is that if you can keep the twenty five hundred, I'm just saying this is what, what's said, and I just want clarity before we go on. Because you specifically said your, you said your, your, um, advertising, your programs and your, and your projects. And so it stayed there. But then when we went on another day of, um, budgeting and newsletter came up. That same estimation was put in the newsletter. So. While that's what you said, um, a while ago, what you're saying now is, 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 sounds better, so I wouldn't wanna do it, but. I know what you said. I'm done.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ferguson. Councilwoman Jones?
Now, if I recall, it was, um. They had, uh, the executive office had so much money into the special events. I think we cut the special events down and then. Transferred the money, twenty thousand dollars to, back to the administration for them to, um. The, um, have funds to do the special events, and then it was decided that twenty five hundred dollars would come out of that twenty thousand. To, uh, for the, to, uh, equip the newsletter, so that, that's where I believe, uh. That's what happened to that, those funds.
Thank you. Alright. With that, are we in a good place with these final changes to, um? Move forward.
So, council president, um, if I could?
Yes.
So at this point, um, it should stay as is, given, um, the explanation that the mayor has given us?
Any objections?
Is the newsletter still gonna be sixty five hundred or is it gonna be more? I mean, does the newsletter consist of the, um? Is, I mean, I guess it depends on when the newsletter is, is it gonna be quarterly, monthly, or what? Cause with newsletter printing, the paper, the postage, is sixty five hundred dollars enough? Or is it, uh, or? I guess we can make it work, I guess, maybe do a quarterly.
Yeah, we can start off quarterly and then readjust next, next year.
Yeah, it, 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 it's something that they can, it's coming out of the administration, it's something that, um. I mean, even though it's a conglomerate of all of us, but, uh, it'll give something for the executive assistant to do.
It's coming out of general operation.
Yeah, but wouldn't, wouldn't the administration be the ones to start the preparation for all of that?
Oh, yeah, I thought you were saying the, the funds was coming out of administration.
No, 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 no. I'm just saying that's, it's a task for the administration to do.
Okay.
And, and to get that started as far as doing all of the, um. Planning for, uh, it seems like it would be something the executive assistant would be doing.
Alright, Mayor Cross?
So, no, the executive assistant wouldn't be doing this in isolation. This would be a task on everyone who wants to submit to this, uh, quarterly newsletter. You must submit your ready-to-be-loaded items. The exec will help with the compiling and he'll do the executive as well as legislative. You guys need to, uh, some, submit your, um, files for this newsletter ready. The exec won't do that. Um, the other thing is, um. I, I still per se, I still would like to say that special events. Taken out of the executive and putting in the administration, I am still in disagreement with that because no other department has that done to them. So I really think that special events should be one pot of money like Councilwoman, uh, Farid had mentioned. Um, three meetings ago, um, I thought she was on to something, and then that special events. Budget, we would know how much that is for the city, because special events are for the city. And I just wanted to make sure I acknowledged that.
Thank you, Mayor Cross, um. It sounds like a good idea. We just need it well in advance to be able to have something like that structured. Um, right now it's just too last minute to put it together in that, uh, format.
She should put that.
Um, the other thing is the consulting, planning and programs. Is that for the city? Is that for you?
So consulting, planning and programs is part of the mayor's initiative. To figure out what pieces of the city can evolve. And where we have space for evolving, like if we want to make it for economic development and strength. So this is part of supporting the knowledge of what the city looks like, uh, from the mayoral's perspective. So those professional services are to advise at the executive level. No different than you would have at the county exec or at the governor's level. Um, each has a professional consultant that helps them understand their city as well.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. Alright. Send other comments. Agenda disappeared. Give me a second, please. Please. That was it. Alright, here we go, sorry. Alright, uh, with that. The treasurer will go back and make all the edits. Uh, next on the agenda is a vote to go into closed session. Uh, do I have? I'm sorry, a vote's going to close session accordance with charter section three oh four B twelve. Do I have a motion to go? Um.
So I'm moving.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Um, so. For citizens who are on this call, uh, this, uh, we're voting to go on a closed session to discuss a contract, um. That is, um. On the section three oh four B twelve allows the council to go into closed session to discuss the contract, uh, in, um, in private. Uh, as relates to, uh, attorney services for the city. Uh, with that, Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Herron?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
President Curtis?
Yes.
Alright, we have five missed.
With that, the, uh. This meeting is now closed. Thank you, and, uh, see you at the next one.